If we don't start till 7:25, it has to be 7:15 on the dot, right?
No.
No?
We have to.
Okay.
You can't do it any earlier, but...
Okay. So, because I just want to jump into some more of the business before the budget presentation, so this can go on live. I just want people to see the presentation. I agree. All right. So I guess it is 7 o'clock or 7:01 now, I think, to open up the Village Board meeting of April 11th, 2019, and ask Mr. Al Bell Kane if we can do this in place.
Absolutely. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Al.
My pleasure.
Well, thanks everyone for coming, and as you see, Darryl is back with us. And we're very excited to have him back.
It's good to be back, good to be seen.
So I hope everything's good with you, sir. So why don't we go into a resolution to approve the Village Board meeting minutes of March 28th? If anyone hasn't had a chance to look at them, check out their spelling. And does anyone have any questions? Nothing? Okay.
I'll make a motion to second it.
I'll second it. Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Bell King?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Abalito?
Aye.
Mayor, motion passed.
All right. So we need to get a resolution to approve some budget modifications against transfers. So we will be transferring from contingency 4,000 to the engineering professional services 4,000. And this is allow for payment to the town of Webster for village portion of the joint WWTPT study.
I think you're in the minutes.
Oh, am I?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we only get like 600 bucks.
A $600 one.
Yeah.
All right. So not seeing what it is on this. Oh, thanks, bud. All right. So let's start over. We are transferring $600 from clerk treasure equipment line to...
That's a little better.
...to the office supplies. And this was for the office shredder that broke, was purchased in 2004. And this is going to allow us to purchase a new one. So I will ask for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Bell King?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Abalito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
All right. So let's move on to approving our claim to warrants. No. That's what I should have put those for you, I guess.
Who did the bills this week?
It's supposed to be you.
You and you.
You're in duty.
No.
All right. I didn't get a chance to look at it.
Did anyone else have questions?
No, I just wanted to know on the first page there, the oats that were getting from Cornell, where are we planting them?
We were thinking some in Wilmerite Park and then some in appropriate spots along the street where we have a wide cream lawn area.
We have, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I really...
Select the best. We're still reviewing the information and seeing exactly how big the root fall, but they're hybrid oak, but they're new, so we really don't know how big they're going to get. So we want to plan on, I guess, best case scenario.
Cornell could give you an idea.
They've got an information sheet that they sent us, and they're going to give us more information when we get them, but they should be ready to pick up by the end of this month, too.
We don't know how tall they get?
I believe the information sheet says 35 to 40, but I wouldn't bet my paycheck on it.
No.
Yeah, we're going to work with the rock boys to cooperate on picking those up, too. I think they have a larger trailer, so I think we're going to send one guy with their driver, trucking driver, and go down and pick them up together. They're getting five and we're getting five, so the help was in the most, so...
Okay. Well, no one has any... Any questions?
The Cohen Law Group, final payment for wireless regulation services. Dan, where are we moving that?
With what?
The Cohen Law Group?
Where... The email... We're at the point where Jake and Will did a map, which is kind of confusing, and there's gaps. And so I suggested that we just eliminate that and allow the small cell facilities within the public right of way in all zoning districts. It's subject to a special use permit. And then you sent me an email back that I didn't understand. And so I emailed you back, and as soon as that issue is resolved, whether we're going to have this map or not, we can get the final draft. But no other money's going to be owed to Cohen.
Okay.
And then we can have a public hearing again and adopt it.
Probably disregard that comment from you.
Okay. I'm waiting to make sure he isn't... You good?
Yes.
I was just waiting. That's fine. I want to make sure you... All right. So I'll ask for a motion to approve claim to warrants.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Bell King?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Abalito?
Aye.
Motion passed.
All right. So I was just informed we are back online here, so we will... If you guys don't mind, we'll go into the budget presentation.
Good evening, and thank you for attending our meeting this evening. I'm going to give you a summary of the budget for the general sewer fund for the 2019-20 fiscal year and a little bit about what we've done with the money from last year and what we plan on doing in the coming year. The budget process begins in... This evening, we'll go over the budget process, the sewer fund budget, as well as the general fund budget, and I will update on the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund. Our budget process begins in mid-January. Department heads are asked to review and consider future items to be purchased and/or necessary for their respective department and so added to the budget. Current financial data is forwarded to all department heads to inform them of how current budget lines stand and what they should reflect in the coming fiscal year. Some budget lines don't change from year to year. Others are guaranteed an increase of 3% to 5%, depending on the expense that's being looked at. All department heads are asked to complete their budget estimates by early February, at which time the preliminary budget is updated, shared, and discussed at various workshops. From that is created the tentative budget and brings us to today's presentation and public hearing. Our sewer fund is nearly three years old. This year's tentative budget is based on $150 sewer rate. Estimated revenues from tax assessments will bring in about $176,850. Sewer billing of commercial industrial users will bring in $770,882. In total, the sewer fund shall accumulate in the coming fiscal year $969,772, and as you will see below, plan to spend the exact same amount. In the coming fiscal year, our sewer rate will be split between operations and maintenance fees, which will be $118 of the $150 fee, and the sewer capital portion, which is $32. And where will these monies be spent? The largest portion, or $570,000, will be for the operation of the sewer treatment plant itself. $220,000, or 23% of the budget, covers debt service, which includes the 2012 bonds for STP reconstruction, the anticipated new reconstruction bond, and finally repayments to the general fund. $119,000, or 12% of the sewer budget, covers employee benefits, including retirement and health insurance. Finally, $60,000, or 60%, is to cover costs for general governmental support, which includes village office salaries, postage, and the like. The general fund, presented now, in the 2018-19 fiscal year has been great at the Village of Webster. If you're the treasurer, thanks to the board of trustees, a new 21st century accounting program was implemented and is currently being used. I'm super excited about this program. Various processes have been simplified. It's very user-friendly. The use of the program will save the village money in the long run due to annual... The lower annual maintenance fees. Surely you've noticed the upgrades to North Avenue. Our North Avenue connector project was completed several months ago. A new pavilion became our new gateway to our village. Sidewalks were upgraded and more streetlights were installed. It was a costly project, yet well-funded by New York State itself. DPW had a great year, too. The equipment rotation plan we put in place a few years ago is now coming to fruition, and the department will always have new equipment that doesn't break down at the drop of a half. In turn, maintenance costs have and will continue to decrease. One of the newest pieces purchased was the trackless plow, and almost a year ago, we welcomed our new dump truck to our fleet. A new shifter has been ordered and should be traveling on our roads and mulching your brush very soon. Additionally, our meeting room was upgraded with new HVAC system. And finally, you probably noticed the roadwork done last summer. On Curtis and the south side of Elm was updated with new gutters and was also milled and paved. The village tax rate will remain this year at $2,130, $2,130 per thousand. Estimated revenues will be $2,807,918. And the village plans to spend no more than our revenues of the same amount. General fund revenue sources are broken down as follows. The greatest income comes from county sales tax at $1,370,000, or 49% of our entire budget. $530,000, or 19%, will be lobbied by property taxes. Another 530 come from other fees, including cable TV franchise, grocery utilities tax, county mortgage taxes, passport services, and building permits. $225,000 comes from state aid, including chips, which is 8% of our total budget. General fund expenses will be the same amount as our income, appropriations of $2,807,918. The largest piece, 43%, or $1.2 million, for the Department of Public Works, which includes two areas of snow plowing, brush pickup, various road projects, sidewalk repairs. Personnel costs are included in these, as well as other village services. 21% of our village expenses cover payroll for officials and office payroll, utilities to run the office, insurance to protect all of our assets, and workers' comp to protect our employees. $532,000 is spent on employee benefits, which includes New York State retirement contributions and employee health insurance, and this totals 19% of our total budget. Home and community services, including storm sewer and street cleaning, total $187,000, or 7%. The remaining $300,000 of our budget is split up between reserve funding, debt service expenses, public safety, economic development, and park upkeep, as well as various cultural events held in our village. Our projects for the coming year include continued equipment rotation. Many of our roads will be worked on in the coming season. A new leafback and box is going to be purchased, and we plan on putting a new roof on this meeting room building. Our Parks and Rec Trust Fund, as you are well aware, is on new construction approved after April 26, 2007. $1,000 is charged per unit that's constructed. To date, we've collected $193,825 in these Parks and Rec fees, earned $277 in interest, and spent $72,374. The current balance of our Parks and Rec account is $121,750. This fund does not necessitate a budget, and it can be used to purchase equipment and land for our parks. I thank you for your attention, and now I ask the board if they have any questions.
Thank you. Well done, Christine.
Thank you.
Questions? If there's no questions, we can open up the public hearing. Do you need a time where we open this up? 7:19?
Yeah.
Do you guys want me to take the mic and come up to you? All right. So we have no questions on the budget, we will close the public portion. Still at 7:19. Thank you. So we were at the comp and overtime reports for March.
Did you mean that we have any public comments?
No.
Okay.
You skipped it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it was intentional, sir. All right. We will allow for the public comments section, and then we will get on to the comp and overtime. Sorry about that.
Richard Walter, 20 Elm Street, Webster Citizens in Baxton. There is one new thing on the very bottom of the agenda which we are questioning, and I have a full handout pertaining to it, but I don't think it'd be appropriate to bring it up now or think we should all talk about it first. Just a few handouts on this item. It's very new to the agenda, and you guys can roll it over and think about it.
It's okay if I...
Yes.
Richard Walter, 59 Dunning Avenue. First, I want to say it's great to see the mayor here tonight. I'm hoping you're doing well. You seem like you're doing great. So maybe appearances aren't deceptive, but it's what it is.
Some cobwebs.
Some cobwebs? Okay. Well, there must be few and far between. So I'm up here tonight because I just wanted to recognize in whatever tape we have or the historical documents that we do, which is kind of my thing, the two deaths that we recently had in the village. The first is of Jack Judge, our former mayor. I want to let that go without coming up here. I probably could go on all night about Jack since I worked with him. He was the guy that appointed me to the board long ago, and he and I went through three campaigns together, two as running mates, and I was his campaign manager in 2005 when he won elections. So we knew each other. As anybody knows who's ever run a campaign, you get to know people pretty quickly because you visit their families, you're in their kitchens, you see what they do, you understand who they are a little bit better. He was a great guy, and I'd say his... Well, there's many things that he did. One of his big accomplishments was the park down at North Avenue, which I think all of us have come to see has been a huge asset to the village. And I'm very proud that Jake and I, while Jake was mayor, put a plaque down there for him, recognizing his outstanding contribution for that park. So like I said, there's a lot to say about Jack. It'd be too long to say it up here. So just suffice it to say he'll be missed, and he's left a lasting legacy on this village, including a picture on the wall. So the second person I want to recognize tonight is someone that... A little before Jack's time, but actually was somewhat contemporaneous with his first time on the board. Many of you might not know, but in 1971, Jack was appointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals to fill a vacancy that was created by Milk Case, being mayor and then unfortunately passing away. So but right around that time, the village was going through a lot of changes. What, Main Street was being widened. But one of the biggest changes we saw was in the election of our first woman trustee. So I'm up here tonight to recognize the death of Nancy Feis because she deserves to have something said. Not only was she our first woman elected as trustee, she was also the first woman to run for mayor in 1969. In fact, since that time, there's only been three, including her, and I'm privileged to know them all. But Nancy was also a member of the Western Baptist Church. She left the board shortly after that time, by 1971. And but you'll be surprised to know in all the research I did on all the subjects, and the same thing with Jack, of course, the big issues at the time in 1969 were Xerox, sewers, and the budget. Can you guys appreciate that? Yeah, yeah.
Really good.
So she was also a member of the Western Council of Churches. She was a member of the Centennial Committee in 2005, and she was also the scout leader. But people aren't only defined by what they do, but by how they are. Both these people were giants in our community. They were kind people, and I'm happy to have known both of them. So I just wanted to make sure something was said tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So back to overtime, comp and overtime. Anyone have any questions on that?
This kind of works up until 3:29, so I'm hoping that the call-in time tends to decrease now that we're into this place.
That would make sense.
Otherwise...
I don't know if there's any questions direction. I don't need a motion for this stuff.
No.
I don't. All right. So agenda item number five. I guess I've never seen this one before, but we have to lift Christina off the table to sign an agreement with the Burr Group. So I need a motion to lift that off the table.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Trustee Bell King?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Abalito?
Oh, aye.
Motion passes.
So this may come to you as a surprise, but now I would ask for a motion to authorize Christina to sign an agreement with the Burr Group. And this is related to the post-retirement healthcare plans, which we discussed. Anybody?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Bell King?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Abalito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. So I think that Jake has a surplus declarations for us here tonight, which I think everyone saw.
I... So I apologize again. I meant to send it out Monday, and when I bring them up to bring up here, I had to second guess myself, and I saw that I did not in fact send them out Monday. But it's, as I described, basically it's a bunch of surplus miscellaneous items. There's tires that we've had for 10 years.
It's all little stuff.
Sitting in the garage for vehicles we no longer have. There's a lift that hasn't moved in 10 years, other than to clean behind it once or twice, I think. Some couple pressure watchers, toolbox. We replaced our toolbox with an old one, rather than throwing it out. It can go to an auction, court power. It's all on the list here.
Is an auction coming up?
Yeah, in May.
Where is it?
Palmyra. There's an annual municipal auction that they have every year of items. So we're just going to try to take things out there and see if we can get more than scrappy.
Judy, you saw that list, right? You okay with that?
Yeah. Yeah, I wanted to see.
All right. Thank you. So I would ask for a motion then for Jake to take these surplus assets to the auction.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Bell King?
Aye.
Trustee Abalito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
So now we have the resolution on the table to authorize Jim Clancy to attend Highway School in Ithaca, New York, and this will be June 2nd through the 5th, and it costs not to exceed $794.
And so there's a lot of great topics at the, at the class every year. It's put out by the Cornell Local Roads Program and the Cooperation Association of Towns, so they go through all sorts of, you know, some things. There's issues related to the right-of-way and legal issues. There's a point of road maintenance things, or, you know, discussions on innovations and new technologies and things like that, so it's really, really very informative.
Anyone have any questions?
Does he have a, does he have a list, or do you have a list of the topics?
None.
Of the ones necessarily that he'll be going to, but a list of the topics.
I do not yet. I think, I have to double-check and see if it's posted online yet, the tentative agenda. See if that's on there. One reason we wanted to get it in a little earlier is it's forty dollars cheaper for the registration.
We can email that out.
If we do it now, yes, but I can certainly send that out.
We can send out the agenda once we get it.
Okay. I would appreciate that.
Yes.
When it's available.
All right. So we ask for a motion?
Yeah, I guess. I'll make a motion.
You make it?
Yeah.
Second.
Trustee Valkyrie.
Hi.
Mayor Byers.
Hi.
Trustee Alito.
Hi.
Trustee Lauer.
Hi.
Trustee Nancy.
Hi.
Motion passes.
All right. I think you're up, Don.
I don't have anything, other than what I mentioned previously about the...
The bike rack.
That's hopefully, that's hopefully in the budget. And I will mention that, I mentioned to Missy Rosenberg, who's, who's going to be a village resident soon, about the meeting, and she, she went on the village website because she wanted us to hear that part of it. And apparently, the day we, it was discussed, which was February twenty-eighth, I believe, the video, there's a big gap in the video. There's the beginning of the meeting, and the end of the meeting, and the middle is missing.
It's not.
So she didn't get to see it. So do you guys have February twenty-eighth, the whole meeting?
I think so.
So what can I tell Missy to look for?
Yeah, she knows.
And you're, you're...
It's, it's on YouTube.
Okay.
Type in Village of, type in what Village of Webster, you should get it out, so.
Yeah, we lost the live feed. The internet went down for a second, so we had to bring it back up.
It was more than a second.
I think it was like three or ten, three or five minutes. It wasn't that long.
Yeah.
So I pulled it back up pretty quick.
It just happened to be the part she was interested in.
Totally true. It was.
It will be a credit for that.
But she is thrilled about the bike racks, as are the other Berry Runners people, who are anxious to, if we ever get decent bike rack weather, to ride their bikes up to the village and go for a little...
Do we order those, Eugene?
What's that?
Are those ordered?
They are not.
No. We gotta wait till the next fiscal year, anyway, because that's where the budget is from, which is until June first.
June first.
So I don't know what the lead time is on those.
I believe they're about six weeks.
Six weeks, so we got time.
But once the, the budget is passed and that's in there, then I can start doing appeal, unless we don't receive them before the budget year starts, so I can shorten that timeframe a little on the June first.
Did you come to find a decision on one? I know we all chatted in, I just didn't know.
I don't believe I did.
It was green, right? Did you do it green?
Yeah.
Maxi, do you think it's...
The village dark, the village dark green.
Yeah.
Like the trucks and...
And the trash cans.
One thing, Missy, well, hey, Missy said she was gonna do some kind of a poll on Facebook or something as to where people wanted locations of the bike racks. So she was, she asked that the village trustees would have, take some input into locations.
I'd certainly like to put them down one time where people want them.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Just do it once, right.
I can guess, but it's better to know.
I think we'd be able to do that, too, right?
Yeah, I like that.
All right. All right, Mr. Waller.
Were we, were we looking at two of them that were, I would say, generic, or, and two of them that were different, or were we looking at all four of them being the same?
I think we did discuss...
I thought we talked about two of them being...
Yeah, I think we did discuss two of the loops. Originally, we're gonna order all the same, but rather looking like a billboard every time there's one of these, say, Village Webster, evidently, there's a hitch type that's a single pole with a loop, and it'll have, it'll have a, the same bike symbol, so they match, but it's not the same Village Webster sign. There could be a point where it starts to look like we have signs all over the place rather than bike racks. So it's nice to make it be coordinated and tied together, but I think it'd be two of the hitch and two of the U-shaped, upside-down U-shaped ones, that have, you know, the bike and the Village Webster.
Adam could also do a poll on Facebook, too, what people, what locations people want.
What's that one called?
Not nothing. Actually, we got a, bring one.
Okay, I'll let Missy know.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right, James, turn it over to you.
Just one concern I have is, I know you guys voted the lift, Chris, so can we put her down now? Till we get dizzy. I have a lot of things, but I'll say them fast because I always take a long time. I want to let everybody know, it's on our website, too, we're doing a spring cleanup again this year. We did it last year for the first time. As far as I know, first time ever. It was very well-received, and this year, with the way the winter and the fall, you know, winter came early and the leave pickup was terrible. It was for us, I know it was for all our residents. So April twenty-second, which just happens to coincide with, I believe that's Earth Day, right? That's when we're gonna start that Monday, the twenty-second, so everything has to be out to the curb, and that's Sunday night. We'll do that, that spring cleanup again sometime next week. We're gonna send out letters tomorrow. I guess, I'm just waiting to talk to the contractor. We're gonna begin the sidewalk project there on Lapham and Elton. And the following week, we're gonna start the gutter portion of the Curtis Park project as well, the removal of those in preparation for that project this summer. And then I have announcement, the Rob Cemetery, just a quick update. I've been working with an Eagle Scout, or an Eagle Scout candidate, I guess it is, Zach LaRue. As you recall, we got the material for the fencing, and before we did the fencing or started working on material, we had a call from the Scouts and see if we had any projects, and I said, absolutely, come get the stuff. So he's gonna be working on that, cleaning up down at the Rob Cemetery, and then also making the fence, you know, the posts and installing the fence there. And he's also talked about enhancing around the sign a little bit where that walkway is, and putting some mulch and a couple shrubs and some plantings right there. So not, not, not crazy with the plantings, but something just to dress it up a little bit in that area. He's gonna do that. I think shrubs can probably be, it's very, very sandy right there, so we want something that's gonna be, be able to withstand some dry weather and not have to get watered every, all the time, so. And then finally, work went down, but I just want to bring up and see if we can put it on the agenda for the next meeting. The school, IMA, we have a IMA with them for sharing the fuel, refueling station at the, at Spry. It's with the school and with the Northeast Joint Fire District. I'd like to be able to begin the process of giving that renewed, but I want to work with Don on it, too, and I want to start conversations with the school and see if we can straighten out. There's some sections in there where there's, village has shared responsibility for maintenance and upgrades. I'd almost like to look at, even if we paid a few cents more per gallon than what they're getting, and just keep that very clear, that if that's the schools, that's a school responsible for that, because we don't know everything that happened before, anything with the property, so to take on liability, one of them's even environmental cleanup and things, the fuel tanks that are leaving. To me, it makes more sense to try to just say, you know, hey, we're using it, even if it costs us, you know, like I said, a few cents more than what they pay for, in consideration for their efforts on maintenance and things. But I think we can get that worked out, and I think the fire district shares that view of it, too, so we're gonna try to do that.
Yeah, I agree.
Makes sense.
Heather just asked if we did a village-wide cleanup. We don't have anything planned for Earth Day, but if anybody's interested, I'll give you my address, you can start in my backyard and work around with the...
We've got a couple who'll come and ask.
You're out of corner.
We have an existing lease with WXXI, or a lease with WXXI that's, needs to be renewed. There's a second amendment, we're working on some language with that with Don, and it should be ready, I think, soon, presented to WXXI. And we're trying to, our existing lease there said that, at their option, they could remove any of the improvements on the property at the end of the lease period, and we wanted to try to change that to reflect, not only the new term, but also reflect that they have to remove it at the end of the lease period, because we don't want, I don't know what I'd do with that big dish that's out there, they left it, so.
Yeah.
We want to make sure that that's in there. And then we'll just have to have, I don't know if it'd be as funny, agenda, but have a discussion about that. I intermined a squintering with the town, I had a call from the town today, and the sewer IMA about a possibility of renewing that, so want to start the process there, start looking at that, see what we have to do. That's all I had. Well, the first issue is whether or not it's subject to renewing. Renegotiating is one. Whether it actually expires at some point and has to be renewed is a question still to be determined.
That's a perfect job for you.
I think that's it.
That's it?
I think.
I got a question.
Yes.
Are the... Are the fence posts being shaped by the scouts, too?
Yes, what we're, our intent was, and it's been quite a while, either roughs on locusts and larch, and the larger ones, it tends to smooth them, and then bevel the top, and we're also looking at trying to do a little, but I think we were just gonna bevel the top. I have to look at the final design, but we talked about a little half-round in there, but it's very, very hardwood, so we want to, it's very similar ideas, Dr. Dunning's house, and I think he's been in Dunning there, had little fence, we were chained in between, doing that. And we also had some just metal strapping that we were talking about, hammering when they, when they make that, their plates at the end where the chains gonna start, and trying to hammer that, give it almost an antique look or antique finish, so it looks kind of like something that might be there in the period when the cemetery went in. Right, that was the first burial there, I believe, was eighteen twenty-three.
Yes.
So they're trying to make it...
Chain?
Yes, yep, there's black powder, we put a chain that we got, and it's gonna be a little kind of non-intrusive fence. Obviously, we had the lease, or the, I think there's a boundary line agreement, I forgot, does that do with the, there's an easement, the area that we have, and part of that easement was that north-south property line that's common with two fifty-six, East Main Street there, and the old, it's river's old paths. We're gonna stay three feet off that line so they have area to put snow and things like that, so luckily, this Eagle Scout is doing a project, his father and grandfather are both surveyors, so I think we should be able to find that property line without much issue and make sure that the fence stays where it's supposed to be. So it's gonna be a little bit further back, probably from the sidewalk than we initially anticipated, but we want to leave room for snow removal there as well. Plus, I believe there, I recall, there's a fiber optic line that runs right on the backside of the sidewalk, so we definitely want to stay clear of that.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
We're happy with it.
Thank you, Jake.
Thanks, Jake. So does anyone have any other announcements or anything? All right. Well, if no one has any other announcements for anybody, again, they're all welcome back.
Yes, thank you.
You do look good, so you've got your road recovery. I will ask for a motion to close the village.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Got a, so you're coming?
We can be all in favor.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.